Take roll call.
Okay, Mr. Hillsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Elliott? Mr. Fagan?
I saw him on here.
Todd, are you? Says you're unmuted. I see you saying that you're here, but something must be off. But I'll move through the roll for now. Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
So you have seven.
We have seven, okay. Meeting summaries, uh, do we need to do those?
Yeah, just the last minute, the minutes from the last meeting.
Do we need a motion to accept the, uh, executive meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero, uh, no committee reports. So we'll go to the one new business item, which is PC twenty-six dash twenty-three. Shaker is the last name.
Good evening, PC twenty-six dash twenty-three Kawawa Shaker was a request for a change of zoning from the C-two shopping district to the C-eight planned commercial district for a tract size of zero point three-three acres located on the northwest side of Morgan Ford, approximately a hundred and thirty feet northeast of Sinwell Drive.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? We do have a call-in user. If you've called in with your phone for audio, can you unmute yourself? I think you should, or maybe you should can't. I think it might be Paula.
I know.
Hi, we can hear you now.
I had to press star six to unmute myself. It was really weird, even though I was unmuted.
So it, now that you're unmuted, it will just leave you unmuted? I don't know if it, there's gonna be an easy way to go on and off mute?
I wonder if the mute button works?
Yeah, maybe try that, um, but text me if you, if you run into an issue. So then, Mr. Hillsinger, you have eight.
Eight, right.
Sorry, Gretchen, thank you.
You're good. As the commission may recall, this, from the public hearing, the site is located in South County and to the right of the screen, the site is outlined in red. Um, at the public hearing, the preliminary site development plan showed reusing the existing vehicle repair facility building and pavement as well as proposed, uh, twenty-two parking spaces. This is parking that would go into, that would count towards the service bays and the inventory. Um, three service bays would be used on the site. And then at the public hearing, the petitioner noted that they proposed to have seven to eight vehicles on the site for sale. Staff is recommending approval of the vehicle repairs, but not for vehicle sales. Um, the continued use of the site for a vehicle repair facility is reasonable at this site as it has been developed with an auto-oriented service use since the nineteen sixties versus a service station and then subsequently as a vehicle repair facility. The C-eight planned commercial district is an appropriate mechanism to ensure the vehicle repair facility is compatible with the other commercial uses along the corridor and nearby residences. The expansion of an automobile sales along the county's commercial corridors has potential to crowd out commercial uses that add vibrancy. And the sale of new or used vehicles is not suitable on sites of less than one acre in size. As the commission may recall from the public hearing, there are three sites in proximity to this petition site that allow vehicle sales on tracts that are less than one acre. Um, two of those sites only permit the sale of vehicles and not repairs. And also, two of those three sites have strict standards on the number of vehicles, um, for sale on the sites, and both are currently out of compliance. Um, we have seen from just past experience that it's difficult to enforce these limitations of vehicles for sale, which is why the staff is recommending, um, to only approve vehicle repairs and not the sale of automobiles at this time. Um, as there's no realistic way to consistently regulate the number of inventory vehicles parked on the site. So as staff is only recommending approval of vehicle repairs, um, some recommendations to the site development plan that we would like to see revised is a six-foot-tall site-proof fence around the trash and oil storage enclosures that we saw at public hearing. Um, staff is also recommending that no outside storage of any materials, um, or they be enclosed by a site-proof fence, um, as approved on the site development plan. Staff is also recommending that no temporary signage be permitted on site. And at this time, I ask for a recommendation of approval.
I do also want to note that Mr. Bedell has joined the meeting, so there aren't all nine commissioners.
All right, we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion of approval of the modi, with the modifications.
Right, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to just, uh, uh, follow up on the change in zoning, the C-eight. And, uh, some of these recommended revisions certainly address some of the concern that we heard, uh, at public hearing. And, and yet, wh- why, why would we not take this opportunity to look at the entire site, building, and what have you, to bring it up to what we would approve for any C-eight new development?
I, I heard you unmute, Jacob. I'll let you.
Oh, no, I just want to make sure that I, um, I think I need a little bit, perhaps a little bit more direction on the question. I, because from a, from a basic standpoint, when staff was looking at the request, we're looking at it also in that, right now, the re, the, the use is permitted as it currently stands. So the legally, the, the use as vehicle service, um, even if the commission recommended, ultimately went the other way and recommended denial, they still have the right through, um, the existing CUP to, to do vehicle service. So we want to make sure that we are mitigating some of the issues that we saw at the site and continuing to, um, permit this use, um, through this request. However, we also, because it's already permitted by right, we're also very cognizant of the limitations that, that local government has on requiring, you know, full-scale redevelopment, um, at this site, because it's been consistently used in its current configuration since the nineteen sixties. Um, we really, we're really, as a, as a local government, um, looking at a situation which our ability to extract significant changes to the site until and unless they do, they make a significantly different request, um, is somewhat limited. So that's, that's some of the background as to why, um, we tried to keep our conditions, uh, you know, relatively light touch for, uh, for this petition.
Okay, so what's the advantage then of granting a C-eight, zoning for this, if they have the authority to do what you're, you're recommending that they only get to do?
Uh, there are actually two ways that the commission could consider this, and, well, three. I mean, you all could, could also just say that you approve of vehicle, that you approve of their request, and we would, of course, prepare that recommendation in that case. So that's kind of the third option. The two options are, if the commission did recommend denial, they would still have their underlying C-two rights as well as the CUP being in existence, so it could continue in its current configuration, um, until some point at which the property owner determines to do something different. Um, this, this C-eight would, would constrict its use to exclusively what's there now. So it would, it would take away the, all the existing C-two rights. It couldn't be, you know, turned into a, um, a retail strip center or anything of that nature until, um, a future, a future proposal came. So some of the value I suppose that the, that the county could get by putting this in a C-eight planned commercial district is that any subsequent redevelopment of the site, um, could theoretically trigger it to, um, higher design standards. So that's, you know, that's kind of the, that's kind of the advantage. But, you know, it's a, you know, it's sort of shades of, uh, to be honest, shades of gray, because they, they have the right to do what they're doing now, and that's going to continue.
Uh, it, the other, the other issue that I, I just would like to have a little more information from staff is, uh, uh, we're, we're essentially, being recommended that we do not allow vehicle sales. Uh, and for both of the reasons that was cited, they are no different than, uh, three other facilities there in the immediate area. I don't think that, uh, we, we want to get into this, well, how many used car sales, uh, places can you have in a row? Just drive over on Lindbergh and you can see their, their, they stretch for about two miles. So, uh, I'm, I'm a little, uh, interested in why we would use that as a reason not to permit auto sales.
So the rationale or the staff's finding of the concerns about the, about commercial vibrancy?
I'm, I'm not sure I, I, I follow that.
So when we look at the proliferation of vehicular sales, particularly small sites, so sites like this, they, they can frequently, they congregate together. I mean, it's a, it's an economies of agglomeration. So you see lots of these things typically being near one another. So staff does find and has concerns about the sort of proliferation of these small, these small, um, vehicular sales facilities, sales sites, car sales, um, dealers. As they sort of, they, they sort of strangle out other sort of permitted uses and desirable uses in our commercial corridors that are from a very high scale. Um, and then from a, from an enforcement issue, the county has a very long-running, um, enforcement issue with these types of facilities, which is why, when the zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen sixty-five, um, they put in that recommenda, or that requirement that as a, as a use by right, they have to be on sites of one acre or greater. Um, so to us, you have to, the zoning ordinance is already stating that having vehicle sales on sites of smaller than an acre is already undesirable for design criteria for a whole kinds of reasons. And so when we have a request in front of us in which a petitioner has, um, not provided significant improvements to the site, is not showing, is not providing significant value, um, you know, we really, we really find that, um, it's not really, you know, keeping with a, with a desirable use, um, you know, the expansion of a use as such. So that, that's sort of some of our philosophical background as to why we make the recommendation.
Yeah, and, and your last couple of statements, uh, I think, uh, agrees with what I'm saying is why, why don't we have other things that we would have that property brought up to, uh, more closely to a C-eight property? I mean, I agree with the, uh, things you're recommending, but I'm sure there's a lot of other things there. I just, I just think we need to be consistent.
Jacob, you said that, uh, unless I misunderstood you, that two of the other sites were not in compliance?
So a recent visual inspection of those facilities, um, as, and then reading their, reading their ordinances, they have, uh, more vehicles on-site than is permitted through their ordinances.
Do we play any part in correcting that?
The plant, no, the planning commission at this point does not have, you don't have the, to take on that sort of, you don't have to take that onto yourself. Once the commission made its recommendation and the council passed that ordinance, it really becomes an enforcement mechanism and an enforcement issue. Um, so that's, it, it really rests with our code enforcement division to ensure that your, that those ordinances are, are put into, are, are abided by. You know, I think what it is for us as a, as a staff and, and sort of relaying to you is just, it's a learning, it's been a, it's a long-term learning experience, uh, of learning, you know, the, the community and what sort of works. And, you know, we've just found over the years that it's a, these can be, become enforcement problems, um, when, when some of these, uh, criteria are put in and, and, you know, putting in certain numbers of vehicles, things of that nature, become really hard to enforce. Um, it can become a, a sort of cat and mouse game.
The only reason I bring it up is if, I know if I was this gentleman that put in for this change, I would point to those two and say, well, you're letting them get away with it and not even giving me a chance to do it legally.
No, I can, I can understand how that could be a perspective that he would put forward. And I, you know, I think he made his case, um, pretty clear at the, at the planning commission public hearing and through his application. And I'm not unsympathetic to, to sort of that viewpoint. Um, but just the, the specific petition and request in front of us, um, is, 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 you know, what we're basing, making our recommendation for, which is that, um, you know, we have strong, we have strong concerns about the expansion of, of vehicle sales at this site.
So one thing I wanted to mention is, um, I don't disagree that it would be nice at the site, although they were very proud of the site and what they had done with it, but, you know, if it could be approved. But I do have a concern that somebody comes before the commission and we basically are telling them, you can continue to use the property for which you've been using it, but now you have to improve it if you want to keep using it. So now it's like they're at risk to even coming before the commission to ask for something because we might tell them more. And I guess I, I do have a concern with that. I don't think there should be a risk to come before the commission to ask for an expansion, you know, expanded use. And I just guess I want to make sure I understand the thinking of C-eight. So you're saying by putting it, moving it to C-eight, it really limits it to this use? And then if they moved in any other direction, then we could use the, use our full control to make sure that the property met the criteria for, for whatever direction they moved into next?
That is, that is correct. That is a, that is sort of some of our thinking on the background side of it. Um, and, you know, I, I kind of like this conversation because I think Mr. Sneed and, and, uh, you are coming at this from different directions, but it shows some of the tension in the planning field and sort of what we're dealing with, which are people's individual property rights and their rights to develop a site, and what can local government extract, require and restrict, extract out of them. Um, which is why our conditions for this are, I, I think, a relatively light touch because we are concerned about, we don't want to make this, um, something that would be really onerous and really difficult for them to comply with because they already have the rights to do so. Um, so as such, um, you know, that's why even if the commission denied this, they can still continue to use their underlying sort of legal rights to, to continue the site as is.
And I have the same concerns that Mr. Sneed had because I drove by the site and I don't know where they would put one more car on that lot. And, you know, that would almost require them to cut back on their service business in order to move to do car sales. So, I mean, to car sales. And it's all an older area. There's a lot of older buildings there.
Right. Correct me if I'm wrong, if we, if he doesn't get the right to sell cars, then what's his purpose of having this? Why don't he just leave it alone, leave it what it is? If he can already do what he's doing?
That would be an option, uh, for him, say, if, an option for the petitioner would be that, um, if this commission were to concur with staff's recommendation, uh, they could come back and request, and of course, you all could, uh, make your determination, they could request a withdrawal just to sort of leave it, leave them as they are. Um, that would be an option that they could, you know, that would be a remedy that they could exercise, uh, procedurally.
Do you think he understands that, Jacob? That he understands that? Is he represented by council? They can explain that thoroughly to him.
I definitely hope so. I, I, Mr. Shaker and I have had multiple conversations, um, about the, about the procedure that he was going, that he's going through, um, you know. I am more than happy to at least point out to him again, his procedural, his procedural rights subsequent to the, to the commission's, uh, recommendation, whatever the recommendation is this evening.
As, as a last comment, uh, from, from A, uh, if, if we do approve a C-eight, uh, then any of the, uh, approved C-eight developments could move in there and we wouldn't have any, the planning commission would not have any, uh, input to what that would be.
If there was a, if it was.
That's the rest.
If it was a recommendation for C-eight, I, I think we wrote the recommendation to be exclusively a vehicle repair facility. So any other use would have to come back as an amended development in the C-eight district in front of the commission. Would they would have to come back either A, for a, if it was, um, you know, complying with their public hearing notice, they could come back as a, as a correspondence item in front of you someday, or B, as a complete, um, you know, completely to, to come back as a, in a new public hearing for a new development. Um, so doing the C-eight route does actually sort of restrict the uses at the site more completely than it does now, because it currently has all permitted C-two shopping district rights plus the CUP for the vehicle repair facility. Or the, it was the vehicle service station, uh, which is old language that zoning ordinance still uses.
Yeah, so approving it strengthens us, disapproving it helps him because then he can do whatever he wants with it up to a certain point.
Within the, within the bounds of the C-two district, yes.
Yeah, but if we approve the C-eight, then we can hamstring it and say, no, it's got to be this, this, or this.
Uh, that is correct, within, yes, within, you know, certain, within certain restrictions, but yes, basically, that's right.
See, I would, I, I guess I'm going to err on the side of the owner. I think the owner should be made aware of that, and if he wants to withdraw the petition and keep doing what he's doing, then fine. Is there a vehicle limitation now on the property for service repair?
Mel, do you know if the CUP?
No, but then, but, but for a regular, you know, vehicle service or vehicle repair facility, the required parking is based on the number of bays. So right now, it has sufficient parking for, um, the, the bays, the three bays that are there.
How many cars?
But A, oh, sorry, go ahead, Wayne.
How many cars can you park on there then?
Well, he's shown, showing a nine-by-nineteen parking space, um, that there are twenty-two parking spaces that his engineer, uh, put on the site. Gretchen, would you go back to the?
I mean, the current situation.
Oh, there's, um, sort of a lack of striping, I think, of formal striping on the site.
Yeah, there's a lack of striping. Um, at public hearing, the petitioner did, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Bedell asked him how many cars were on the site. Currently, he kind of didn't give us a full answer, but he did say that there are, there were two parallel rows along that back western, uh, fence, and he said both of those two rows at least had ten cars each. So easily, there was over twenty cars probably on this site at the time we went out to visit.
Okay.
Mr. Fagan's still having some issues with his microphone, but he did put it into the chat that he was wondering the difference between a car on the lot to be repaired and a car on the lot to be sold. Um, so right now, he doesn't have the, the rights to have vehicles sold, but what he had shown when it was basically happening at the site was over where Gretchen's hovering the mouse was sort of the inventory storage area, and then vehicles to be serviced were more to the, um, kind of southwest portion of the site.
Good point, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Sneed, I think I cut you off a little bit.
And I think one of the differences too, Mel, correct me if I'm wrong, is that vehicle service does have a timeline stipulation on how long cars can be parked on site, whereas if you permitted vehicles to be sold there, they could just sort of be warehoused there until the vehicles are, are sold.
That's correct. Vehicles to be repaired can't be there for more than seventy-two hours.
Right, and, and that is totally, uh, uh, unmanageable. Uh, we all know that. And I would much prefer to see cars for sale because they're, they're, they're probably not got the hood up, the tires off than ones that are there for service.
Well, he is proposing to do both. He's, he, his primary is.
No, I understand that, yeah. Yeah, I understand that. But the ar, argument I think I heard was that, uh, the, the, the used cars are, are the ones for sale would, would be detrimental to it. I think that would help.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. To accept the staff's reckon, recommendations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, let's take roll call on this.
Okay. Mr. Hillsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Elliott?
No.
Mr. Fagan? Todd, you might put yours into the chat, I apologize. He said no. Ms. Hancock?
With Todd, a no.
Todd was a no.
Okay.
Ms. Hancock?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
And Mr. Bedell?
Yes, and can you, uh, say who sponsored it and who seconded the bill?
So I had, uh, Mr. Taylor as the, uh, made the motion for acceptance of the staff recommendation and Ms. Hancock as the second.
And did they, and did they both vote in affirmative or?
Um, Mr. Taylor did and Ms. Hancock abstained, but I don't know if that, um, I don't think the motion maker has to make the same.
No, that has no bearing.
Okay, never mind, thanks.
So I have, no, no problem.
The motion carries five, three, one. And with that, uh, we have no old business, no correspondence, no site plans, and we'll go to the, uh, good of the order.
So we bring to you the second, uh, chapter in our, our, what we're trying to make a monthly education series for the planning commission. Um, this topic this month is, is lighting, lighting regulations. So Abby's gonna, um, go through a bunch of information, and then we're happy to take any questions you have.
Yeah, so as Mel said this evening, uh, we wanted to give you an overview of the lighting regulations of the zoning ordinance, uh, which is section one zero zero three-point-one-six-nine. So why do we regulate lighting? Um, this graphic, which is from Noir Lab, shows the amount of dark sky visible in different stages of development. So number one, all the way on the left, is your, um, excellent dark sky site, which has no development and the dark sky is fully visible. Um, and then it gets more urbanized to a fully-developed downtown environment, um, at number eight and nine with almost no dark sky visible. Unincorporated St. Louis County sits between, um, numbers five and seven on this graphic. And studies show that the amount of dark sky exposure affects, um, the health of people and it affects wildlife, um, birds, bats, and bugs we hear about quite often. Um, lighting regulations allow us to design a lit environment that serves our needs while also promoting the health and well-being of residents and the natural surroundings. So the general purpose of the lighting regulations is to require outdoor lighting that is adequate for safety and convenience in scale with the activity to be illuminated and its surroundings, directed toward the surface or activity to be illuminated and contributes to a pleasant nighttime environment in an efficient manner. Additional specific purposes are to provide safety and personal security, convenience and utility in areas of public use or travel, permit reasonable use of outdoor lights, um, for such uses that require it, control glare and excessive brightness, and allow for better visibility, um, with less light and avoiding light bleeding on to neighboring properties. So the zoning ordinance contains standards by which we review lighting plans to ensure sites are lit in a way that is desirable. The general standards include prohibiting flickering or flashing lights. Um, we have a requirement for the cutoff angle, which is, it's the angle between the vertical axis, which would be the light pole or the, the wall on which a, a light is mounted, and the first line of sight at which light is not visible. Um, so that's illustrated in this graphic here, which shows a ninety-degree cutoff angle, sixty-degree cutoff angle, and then when there's no cutoff. And so the intention there is to kind of control how much of the area is illuminated. And we require an eighty-five-degree cutoff angle for all lights except. And we require an 85-degree cutoff angle for all lights except for streetlights. We also have restrictions on light pole height. So it's 16 feet for residential uses, 25 feet for all other uses. And in parking lots larger than five acres, they can be up to 35 feet. And then the other kind of general standard of note is this kind of dusk to dawn requirement. So parking lot lights need to extinguish on kind of automatically when there is sufficient daylight, that, that makes the lights no longer necessary. The zoning ordinance has requirements for parking lot illumination levels. Illumination levels are measured in foot candles. And this is a measure of, of illuminance amounting to one lumen per square foot. So essentially it's a measure of how bright the lighting is. The higher the number, the brighter the light. So the maximum level at property lines adjacent to commercial or industrial districts is 0.5 foot candles. The maximum level at property lines adjacent to residential, non-urban, park and scenic or carst preservation districts is 0.1 foot candles. The maximum level measured five feet from the base of the light standard is eight foot candles. And on lighting plans that we review, sometimes the professionals have provided, like they've drawn the circle themselves around the, the base of the light standard of five feet. But also with our digital plan reviewing software that we have, we're actually able to measure that distance ourselves and, and verify that on our own, which is great. And then the maximum level under canopies is 22 foot candles. So that's under your gas canopies or kind of entryway, lighted canopy areas. And then the maximum level on the roadway right of way is 0.1 foot candles. This is for parking lot lights, not for your standard streetlights. So, streetlights are, there are a couple of different items that are exempt from the lighting regulations. Streetlights, as I mentioned, lighting for single-family residences, lighting for monuments, statues or landmarks. Sign lighting, that is regulated in the, the sign regulations of the zoning ordinance. Temporary decorative lighting or lighting for special events. And then lighting for FAA or federal and state agency regulated sites. So like the airport, helicopter pad at a hospital, those are not subject to the, the zoning ordinance requirements. A lighting plan prepared by a design professional is required for any changes to outdoor lighting. Lighting plans are typically required as part of the site development plan review process. The plan must show the location of all light standards, foot candle levels throughout the site to the property lines, the specifications for proposed light standards and a diagram showing fixture locations and types. So this is an example of the lighting plan for Tesla. So we'll zoom in on some of the, the details. But it shows the location of the light standards and foot candle levels throughout the entire site. On the right side are the, the lighting specs. And then in the lower left is a table for identifying the standard type and some additional information. And then one thing that was nice that they provided on this one is a, a rendering of what the site will look like at night. So this is just zoomed in so you can see some of the details closer. You can see the foot candle levels a little bit better. And you can see that it's zero at that southern property line adjacent to the residences and, and along Boar Park. And then circled in black on the plan itself are the location of, of the various standards. And then there's the, the luminaire schedule, which tells you which, which type of light standard it is. In the lighting specs, it had more, more detailed information about those, each, each proposed light standard. So the planning commission can recommend lighting regulations in excess of zoning ordinance requirements for planned districts, conditional use permits and, and M X Ds. Some things that can be regulated include the height of, of light standards. So often we require residential standards, so 16-foot standards in commercial development. On that Tesla plan, they were required to have 16-foot stand, shorter standards closer to the, the residences. The commission can also recommend a di, a different requirements for the foot candle levels, either at the property line or elsewhere in the site. So you may recall the First Missouri Credit Union, there was a requirement for 0.0 foot candle measurement 20 feet from the eastern property line, which was adjacent to some multifamily residences. That, that's something that can be required through the, the planned district processes. The commission can put requirements on the light standard styles and, and the number of light standards throughout the site. So here on the, on the right is an example of the lighting requirements from a, a recent M X D. This is that tri-star development. So these, these regulations involved the height of the light standards and required that they be decorative and cohesive through the entire development and required some Ballard style lighting. So, so here are just some examples of various lighting types that the commission could consider. So Ballard style walkway lighting, different styles of kind of parking lot lighting, a wrought iron look or that kind of Bell style lamp, lamp. And then here are some examples of various wall lights that could be required. At the top left, you can see that the wall lights are used in conjunction with Ballard style walkway lighting. And then at the bottom, you can see that they're used with kind of a specific architectural style of, of parking lot light. And then, yeah, thank you. And then the last thing we wanted to note is the requirements for outdoor lighted recreation and athletic fields. These, to develop a lighted athletic field, it requires the conditional use permit. You'll, you'll recall from earlier this summer, I believe, the Hazelwood School District projects to, to light their football fields and, and tracks. So through that process, the commission can recommend light controls for specific curfew times. In the zoning ordinance, the maximum pole height is 80 feet for a lighted athletic field. And then the light intensity cannot exceed 0.8 foot candles measured five foot above the grade along the property lines adjacent to residential, non-urban or carst preservation zone districts. And then there are specific requirements for when those, those fields can be lit. So if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask and, and we'll do our best to answer.
Anyone? Abby, you must have done a good job then.
Thanks.
Are you going, are you going to recommend any new developments? You know, with homes and apartments that they have this type of lighting? Rather than what, what normally is put in by, you know, what you even put in is the most economical lighting, which sets up a little higher and sprays out and not down.
Yeah.
Do you want to add to that, Abby, or would you like for me to?
Oh, I was just gonna bring up the First Missouri Credit Union again. So in that C eight ordinance, it did require specific, I don't recall the exact language now for the, for the parking lot standards, but we had some specific language in there about what those standards look like. And when they went, when we started site plan review for that project, they proposed just your standard parking lot lights. And we worked with them to review. I think in the ordinance, we, or at some point, the department was requesting like a wrought iron kind of look. And we worked with them to, to find a light standard that matched the redeveloped building a little bit better than, than what we had kind of initially envisioned. So for that one, we worked with them to find a style that is different than your traditional, like stereotypical parking lot light and, and worked with their overall development. And then for the tri-star, that mixed use development on, on Olive Boulevard, that one we, you all required Ballard style lighting in the dog park area. So that'll kind of keep it a little bit lower level lighting for, for pedestrians specifically. Go ahead, Jacob, I don't know what else you had to?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say that from a, from a general standpoint, you know, we make recommendations for heightened requirements for lighting only in the cases where there's a, there's an obvious rationale for good planning practice to require it. It's not necessarily our role just to make it, you know, more, sort of more restrictive just for the, just for the fun of making it more restrictive. There has to be a really tangible benefit and there needs to be something for us to mitigate. So that's when you see us make those recommendations, we try to tie it to rationales as to why we would make those recommendations. Otherwise, we try to keep things as much as possible to the sta, to just the, the standard so that, you know, everyone across the, you know, across the board are all the same, are all treated the exact same.
Okay, anything else? Jacob, anything?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
I just hope the commission finds these kinds of things valuable and that we are enjoy, you know, coming up with this kind of stuff so that hopefully over time you all get, you know, more and more well-versed with the, the various requirements of the zoning ordinance and understand sort of, you know, what, sort of what staff is doing on a day-to-day basis, so.
Yeah. And I think if, you know, we have a public hearing in a week, if there's a topic that you want us to, to focus on, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll just be kind of churning through the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Seeing nothing else with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, ice habit, nine, zero, and we're out of here till when?
A week from tonight at seven in the chamber.
And we have, well, two petitions, Dogwood Social.
We'll see everybody in person next week.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Bye-bye.